Followed the Tuesday, October 7th meeting on the Monmouth City Council and ask Phyllis for a roll call, please.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Guthrie.
Present.
Counselor Coons.
Here.
Counselor Milligan.
Here.
Counselor Schaefer.
I'm here.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Oberst.
Here. All right, show the fight's list, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The consent calendar tonight consists of minutes from the council meeting of September 16th, and I had a couple of really minor corrections for Phyllis, she reported around to y'all, including me moving to approve the consent calendar, which I can't do, and one other little thing. So if I can have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mayor's report tonight, attended the inaugural meeting of the Polk Tourism Studio, and we had a nice gathering there of folks throughout Polk County who are interested in how to develop the things that we have here as tourists draw us, the old thing of inviting people to come and see what we have and spend a little money and head on out for some more people to come and spend their money with us. So just the very beginnings of that process. I had an LOC board meeting and the entire LOC conference in Eugene last weekend, and lots of good stuff there. Learned a few good things from last weekend, weekend before.
Weekend before.
Yeah, weekend before, thank you. And lots of good things there, as usual, learned a few things, and we'll see if we can take a minute at work session to talk about some things there. We had the formal ribbon cutting for the Telmud Road Sidewalk Curved Gutter Bike Lane Project, and had a couple of the commissioners there, and Counselor Coons put on her school board, or school district hat and came and represented the district, and the fact that that project is serving three school buildings on 16th Street, plus supports one non-district school, very far in. So really a good project to have done. And then just a brief update on Winnipeg, we received a statement of the estimated cost and, or the actual cost of the package that we want to purchase and the monthly payments, which turned out to be less than we thought they were going to be by about $200 a month. And then a sample contract, which I gave to the W-I-M of Winnipeg, and I haven't heard from W yet, and Darren's working on that. Independence basically deferred to Mr. Counselor Shutterly in his opinion, and he's come up with a couple of areas of concern that we're trying to work through. But the interesting piece is, it may be that in fact, for the exact same price, instead of leasing for five years with a 10% residual to purchase it outright, we may just purchase it outright, and for the same price as the lease, without the residual. So we're trying to hammer through exactly how all that works, and we'll get that squared away hopefully in the next week or so. And that's it. That's all I've had to do this past two weeks. Turning to council reps, supporters, and commissions, and Counselor Silvernagle.
Thank you. The senior center met on September 23rd, the advisory board did, and lots of stuff going on again. Let's see, October 10th, couple up here in a few days, they got a potluck spaghetti fee. On the 16th, we got soup and pie sale. On the 18th, they got a craft supply sale. 29th, they got a Medicare New and Medicare Fraud Program that there's being put on. And also, even in early November, there's several things going on. Dr. Turey is coming over from Western to do an advanced care directive on November 5th. So lots and lots of activities there. They've got some travel groups still trying to get together, very, very active senior center.
Very good. Okay, Counselor Carey.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Arts and Culture Commission met on this past Thursday, October 2nd, and had a relatively light agenda. However, we did sort of approve and were prepared to begin the distribution of the, you know, Arts and Culture brochure that they've been working on, which, you know, lists locations for the visual arts, for the performing arts, sort of annual events and Arts and Culture nearby. So that's been something that's been in the works and finally off the ground now. And we're continuing to work with a survey on, of the community in terms of what it is that the community would like to either be engaged in or know about as it relates to Arts and Culture. And there's some things we've got to work through on that. It's fairly generic at the moment. We kind of missed an opportunity with Music in the Park, but I think there's still opportunities there that we can mine some information to be helpful as they list group plans for the future. So I think those are the primary and major discussion points.
Okay. Thanks, Phil. Counselor Silvernagle.
The planning commission is continuing to hear public hearings, so I'm not attending.
Okay, very good. Counselor Ryer, oh, Counselor Ryer's not here.
Hey.
Oops. Counselor Carey.
Because of the conflict with the LOC conference, the mine board did not meet in September. Will be meeting once again back on schedule in our code. Had to move some things around a little bit relative to date, but it'll work.
Very good. And any community announcements? Panther auction Saturday.
Some Saturday.
Be sure to attend and spend some money. Support high school athletics and some trinkles down middle school. Anybody else have anything? City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. One item on Madrona Park, still making good progress. As you know, the bathroom got installed. Got it installed, so.
That was a pretty amazing set of photographs that are sent around by staff of the bathroom from Madrona Park lying through here, because it was a prefab unit and came in all as one chunk, and pretty amazing to see that arrive.
So it's doing good. Then the ball field area, got all the irrigation put in, and then now they're moving, they've got it leveled and a nice, happy dirt in contrast to some of the stuff we have around here. Put down the basin where the arboretum's going to go in, and actually now they got, that looks like they got everything spotted out pretty much where trees and shrubs are going to go, so it's making some nice progress.
So Mr. Fancy, when's your estimate of when they're going to be done out there? Do you have any use?
Well, I think the end of October.
Still the target?
Yeah, that's still the target.
Very good.
Yeah.
That's exciting. Looking forward to that. Is that your impression too?
Still some of their targets.
All righty.
Then a second note, wanted to note a significant accomplishment for our city recorder, Phyllis Volman. While back, she became a certified municipal clerk, but you can go further than that, so she decided to. Now, that first lock in there was about 300 hours of training, going to sessions, other work you can do, involvement with the organization to get the certified, or master municipal clerk, is another 300 hours, which she's got done, so she has now gotten that status as the highest status you can have in the Municipal Clerk Association, and it gets pretty darn awesome that she did all that.
Very good. So are we allowing her out to communities that need help and, like, yeah?
I'm already a mentor.
Good, very good. Phyllis's answer was she already mentors under city reporters, so very good.
And it's good with, it's helping her out with her supervising her staff, but this will enhance her skills, not her.
How many people aren't here in office now, Phyllis?
Me. Well, well, to oversee that one over thing, I plead with them.
Very good. Is that it? Okay. Citizen comments and anything that's not otherwise on the agenda, one, three minutes per side, give it a take. Anybody? Okay. Turning to the business agenda, and the first item is Petals and Vines Liquor License. And who's taking that? Is that you, Scott?
Yeah.
I see this arch isn't here.
Yeah, this is real simple ones. What happened here is that Petals and Vine moved, and while they're moving, unfortunately, the actual license came up and needed to be renewed, and they just forgot. So this is just essentially, everything's fine, there's never been an issue, and so it's just a different location and a renewal. So at this point, we're recommending approval of license.
Okay. And if there's anybody who has any questions on that, or?
I move to send OLCC a recommendation to approve the liquor license application, granting greater privileges for Petals and Vines after their new location.
Second?
Moved and seconded? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Turning out of a public hearing on sale of real property. This is, we had this in work session in council last time. It's a tiny little strip of Echo Street that we own for some reason, just off Echo Street. And for us to, for those lots to be developed, it's not of use to the city, so we need to sell it to the adjacent property owners at fair state.
That's correct.
So I'd like to open the public hearing on sale of that property and turn staff for a report.
Okay. The area that is proposed for sale is the Westerly eight and a half feet of the property identified as a Cessar map, 8430 CB Tax Lot 201, which is adjacent to Echo Street South. The city acquired the property in 1992 for the cost of a dollar. The property is approximately 4,476 square feet in size and is vacant. Looking at the layout of the property, it really includes a portion of property that is proposed for sale of about 1,154 square feet. This should be included as the yard area in the adjacent tax lot 200, which is privately owned. The remainder of the property, should the city decide to go ahead with the sale, would be dedicated as public right of way. Currently, it's located in the developed portion of the street, but the city owns fee title to it. It's not been dedicated for public use. And just to clarify, the city typically does not own right of way through fee title. They have dedication deeds that dedicate it for use by the public. The city manages the right of way and controls the right of way and controls access. The property was originally purchased for $1 in 1992. A public hearing is required before this portion of the property, the 1,154 square feet total, can be sold. And then the last step in the sale process would be for the council to approve a resolution declaring the property not needed for public use and authorizing the sale. The owner of the adjacent property has submitted a partition application, and this allows them to consolidate this additional land with their property, and that would happen subsequent or in conjunction with the sale through a lot line adjustment process between the owner of that property and the city, as the two property owners involved. So I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have regarding this.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this matter, pro or con? Anything else from staff? With that, I will close the hearing. And we've got that piece done, so now we would move forward to the next agenda item, which is adopting a resolution declaring that real property as not needed for public use and authorizing the sale there of. And so, Mark, if you have anything more to throw in on this item?
This resolution would approve the sale of the property to Larry Dalton and Jim Warren, who are the owners of the adjacent property, tax lot 200. The sale price would be for $1. We've included, I believe, the first page of the sale agreement and receive for earnest money as a detachment to the resolution approving the sale. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions on this?
Were there any hard costs to us to do any of this work, more than the dollar we're going to receive?
Well, there will be. We will pay the, we will pay the surveyor cost to prepare the dedication deed for the right of way, but we would have to do that anyway. If not, the sale really doesn't affect that. We shouldn't own that, we should dedicate it. So yeah, that's the only one. I think what we agreed on here as part of this was that the, for the area in question, the surveyor working with the owners next door will include that as part of their partition plat, and they will pay the cost for that survey.
So minimal cost for some survey work.
Right, right.
That we are offing up for our.
What was the resolution number for this one?
The resolution would be 1781.
I move approval of resolution 1781, authorizing the sale of the Westerly eight and a half feet of the property identified as a Cessar map, 8430 CD Tax Lot 201.
There is a motion, do I have a second? Second? Move and second it. And this will require a roll call, Phyllis.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Counselor Coons.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
And with that six oh, we would have adopted that resolution. Very good. Our next item is a resolution around support for assisted housing, and it looks like, Phyllis, this one is you.
So Mayor and Council, we're the grant team for the Oregon Community Development Block Grant for Housing Rehabilitation. Diana Satanovich came and gave us her final report on it. As part of the process, we need to adopt this resolution, make it work with the federal government, basically.
Okay, any questions on this for Phyllis?
We've done these grants before, and we didn't have to do this?
New requirements.
New requirement, okay. Thanks, because I know we had, we had been the fiscal agent prior to this.
We had talked, Scott, about not being the fiscal agent for these for a while, and asking some of our compatriots in other cities to step up and do their fair shares, so that we could receive CGVGs for a different project perhaps? What's up with that?
I just, I haven't heard any notion of another round of this. They had a really hard time. They're having a harder time finding the rules, the requirements put on it, finding people that could actually qualify. It's gotten really challenging. Actually, but as you remember, we actually turned back some of the money on this one.
So this is just a preparation, just in case?
No, this is just, this is just a closeout.
Oh, closeout.
All this is just a closeout.
We're finishing the grant.
Yeah, just the last step they came up with, they said, hey, you have to do one more thing.
Okay. Any other questions? This would be resolution 1782.
I move adoption of resolution 1782, declaring a policy of support of assisted housing for persons of lower, middle, and fixed incomes.
Second?
Moved and seconded, and this would also require a roll call.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Milligan.
Aye.
Counselor Coons.
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer.
Aye.
Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie.
Aye.
Resolution adopted. Next item tonight is first reading in ordinance LA 14-02. Mark? Just kind of movement staff on?
Yeah. Members of the council, this would add language to the zoning ordinance that would allow maintaining the poultry in three residential zones. At your place this evening is a revised Exhibit A. It was pointed out to us, there's some duplication in the use of the word garden in a couple of the zones there. So everything, I'm proposing that three additional highlighted, in this case, a couple of strike throughs and one addition to the amendment. We checked with Lane, and the charter allows for this, to make these modifications moving forward. So what we wanted to do was make sure that we got rid of the duplication with the word garden, that's used several times in the low density and the medium density zones, and also add the uses of playground or park to the, to the mixed density residential zone consistent with the other two zones.
Any questions on this, council?
You want to run through that last piece again?
Well, you noticed that in 91015, a playground or park is allowed. Looking down, going down the page of amendments.
Because the RS zone.
Yeah, the RS zone, and the RM zone, not a 9115C playground or park. And then when I went to the MX zone and looked at it, playground or park was not specifically included in the list of permitted uses. So this would add that consistent with the other two zones.
And garden is in B and C, under the RS zone. Garden is also under B and C of the RM zone. We didn't want to have to describe why we had one kind of garden versus another kind of garden.
Capital G garden and a small g garden.
Was to have garden. Those were those changes tonight.
Anyone else have any questions on this?
The confab I was having with staff right before was the inclusion in the mixed use zone of the word open space uses, because that is specifically listed in the section that includes gardens, orchards, crops. The part we're changing, maintaining poultry, but not maintaining cattle, horses, or livestock. So that section never existed in the MX zone, and my question to them was, we added to the MX zone, which is great, except at the beginning of it, it says open space uses. It does not say open space uses before that clause in the other two zones. And so I was just trying to make sure what kind of lots within these zones could have gardens, orchards, or crop cultivation. Because in a single residential zone, you can grow gardens, orchards, and crops. You can buy a lot next to your house, you can build a house on one lot and have a orchard on the next lot. And in the RM zone, you could buy two lots, and you could have apartments on one lot, and you could have a garden or orchard or crop on the next lot. I just wanted to see if within the MX zone, you could buy two lots, have a house on one lot, and a garden, orchard, or crop on the lot next to you, or if that only had to be in the open space uses. And they have said that in fact, you could have the garden, orchard, or crop on a residential lot, or manufactured home lot, or a multifamily structure lot, or an open space lot. I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah, and open space is, use is already in the code, it's just never been defined. So really, all this is doing is, and really, it's not even defining open space, it's providing examples of what constitutes open space use. So it's really not changing as so much as it is giving some guidance in the code as to what constitutes an open space use that is permitted on any lot in the MX zone.
But it's also permitted in an RM zone or an RS zone, on lots that are only RS or RM.
You know, I sort of read this quickly, and with all of the conversation we've had regarding it, I'm paying a little more attention. And now I'm less clear than I thought I was. Under 91.015 permitted uses, we're going to, from B, strike garden as, as...
Because it's already, because it's also in C. That's just a redundant, that's just a redundant C.
It's also in C. And however, okay, garden, all right, maintain. So I was a little confused that the semicolon got me there, because I was reading it initially garden, orchard, or crop cultivation, along with cattle, horses.
Right.
Livestock and all of that, if not permitted. And I thought that was some real, that was sort of a conundrum, I couldn't work it out.
It should be a period, and then maintaining cattle, horses, or livestock is not permitted.
Okay.
I agree, it's.
Y'all better now?
I'm clear on that now.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I have first reading of this ordinance by title. I will take care of that piece of business right now, an ordinance adopting legislative amendment 14-02 to the Monmouth zoning and development ordinance. We will take that up next time. The next item on the agenda was a hot topic at the LOC convention, let me tell you. Yes. And this is the idea of adopting now an ordinance taxing medical and/or recreational marijuana, even though recreational marijuana is not currently legal in the state of Oregon. And we had a wonderful young attorney from Lee of Oregon City Sue, I'm always the tall when I hear him talk, he's very well spoken and really lays things out clearly. And he pointed out, when the question was raised, well, how can you tax something that's not legal? How can you pass a tax on something that's not legal? He pointed out that Al Capone did not go to jail for bootlegging. In fact, Al Capone went to jail for failure to pay income tax on the money he earned bootlegging liquor. And so they never could catch him bootlegging, but they caught him in tax evasion. And so it's not unheard of to tax something that's illegal, and this would be an example of that indirectly, I guess. So Lane, can you fill us in on this?
Sure, just a little bit more on that maybe. The purpose you're adopting this in this sequence now, to have it in place before the November election, is that Ballot Measure 91 includes and expresses preemption of local taxes, city and county taxes, on the sale and purchase of marijuana. And there is at least a theory that that preemption is prospective, that is, it will apply only to taxing, or local taxing ordinances that are adopted after the effective date of the measure. Effective date of the measure, if it passes, will be December 4, 30 days after the election. And so this is sort of a speak now or forever hold your peace opportunity.
Forever hold your tax.
For local governments, if they even want to have the option to collect the tax on the sale of marijuana, to impose it now. There are a couple of things about this that are, will prove to be very interesting. Number one, of course, Ballot Measure 91 needs to pass in order to make recreational marijuana sales legal. Number two, you can expect that there will be a legal challenge even to an ordinance like this that's adopted prior to the effective date of the measure, because the preemption language in the measure preempts the imposition of tax on the sale of marijuana by local governments. And clearly, the proponents are viewing that to mean whether you've adopted the ordinance or not, you can't impose it on sales, and once this measure takes effect. So there will be a battle whether or not, if you adopt this ordinance, it is still, whether or not it's preempted anyway. And because of that brewing contest, it will be my recommendation, if you adopt this ordinance, that after Ballot Measure 91 takes effect, I'll recommend that we adopt a moratorium to not collect any of these taxes. The risk being that cities that go ahead and collect the taxes may be faced with having to refund the taxes if they're determined not to have been validly collected. I just assume, let some other canary in mind take that one on, and there probably will be. But this will at least, if you adopt this ordinance, first reading tonight, second reading at the next meeting, you will have an ordinance in place before the measure takes effect. You'll have the right then to collect this tax as long as it's determined at some later time that the preemption in the measure does not invalidate this ordinance. So lots of moving parts, lots of things that have to happen before you'll ever collect any tax on this, but by adopting this, you at least place yourself in what I would say the most advantageous position for ever being able to, whether you elect you or not. It's just a matter, if you don't, we know that after the measure takes effect, you won't have any opportunity to do it. So most cities are doing this, most. I think there's a strong.
There was a strong ground swell.
Yes, yes, yes. To do this, basically just to keep options open.
That's right.
It's what it amounts to. I really, you know, I would regard this ordinance, well, I spent a little bit of time on it, but I wouldn't sweat the details of this, it's largely a placeholder ordinance. Before, we would ever expect to actually impose this. We'll have more experience statewide with Ballot Measure 91, and could very well amend this ordinance to adjust to whatever the post-election circumstances might be. So I wouldn't worry about, I don't want to say worry, but the particulars of the ordinance aren't so much, so important now as just having it in place. Some cities are enacting ordinances that provide for a zero tax rate, thinking that they'll amend them later to impose. I'm a little worried about that. My concern is that a tax of zero is not a tax. My concern is that a tax of zero is not a tax. And so if, if we really want to make the strongest case that we can, that we have a tax ordinance in place prior to the effective date of the measure, we want some rates in there. And experience will probably dictate whether those rates are too high or too low, but they can always be adjusted before you ever actually impose it. I shouldn't say impose it because I'm falling into the argument of the proponents of the preemption, before you ever collect the tax. But this, at least, like I say, will, will get your foot in the door and we will see what comes next, if you choose to do this.
Questions?
So I'm just curious, because, again, we collect taxes, we have our transient occupancy tax, we have other local taxes, even though the state doesn't have a sales tax, and the state cannot impose a tax.
You could.
On marijuana.
On anything.
The state can't.
Local governments can't.
A local government.
Yeah, Ashland has a sales tax, I know, on meals, they could impose it on...
Right.
These elk kids if they wanted to. Yeah, you could impose a sales tax.
So we could have, before we made alcohol legal, we could have imposed a local sales tax on alcohol.
No, you could not, because that is already expressly preempted by state law. Mighty unconstitutional.
Okay.
That's an already constitutional.
And if cocaine ever becomes legal, we can impose preemptary taxes on it.
Unless you're preempted by other states. And it's, it's an interesting question you raised there because if the ballot measure is interpreted as preempting all local taxes, whether adopted before or after, and you decided you wanted to impose a general sales tax, citywide, you would have to exempt marijuana sales.
Oh, fine.
Because you can't collect on them, if that's how the measure is interpreted.
Right, dependent on court.
So who enforces the collection of the taxes? Is it the city?
Yeah, finance department, just like transient lodging tax. Yeah, if our tax be enforced.
And if they don't pay, we just send them questions?
The enforcement methods are all in here.
Everybody talking, Mr. Dunbar is looking forward to going down to the business to check.
The, this, I mean arguably, we could begin, I don't see that it says legal, sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana. We could go get it right now.
John, one of the ones I learned at the LSC convention, the state of Kansas has a marijuana tax stamp. And if you're in the business of selling marijuana, you can anonymously apply for and pay for a stack of marijuana tax pants. However, if you were busted selling marijuana in the state of Kansas, and it doesn't have Kansas tax pants on it, not only are you in violation of the law about selling marijuana, but you're also evading, guilty of evading taxes.
I, I would those too. I grew up with tax pants on marijuana. This is nothing new.
So the answer is, you could be collecting from those.
That's my assumption, so, so, well, we're not going to go there, should this, should measure fail, I mean, I suppose we'd have that.
You could.
We'd have that option. Well, one of the things that, that just on the, I mean, I, I see a lot of reason to do this, there will be costs associated with recreational marijuana, should that pass. There will be, there's without question, additional costs associated to that. Again, it, it would be arguably a bit of a disincentive, and I think that's what a lot of people are doing, is they're passing these things as a disincentive, which is another discussion.
And the ones that aren't, even the economic development opportunities.
There you are. I, I do have, I'm going to be a yes on this when it comes to it, but I, I do have a little difficulty with the, a 5% tax on medical marijuana. You know, that's, that's for a medical use, I mean, I understand arguably, but nonetheless, it is, and I don't particularly like the concept of taxing medicine, although it probably happens. But those are sort of the two things that, that stick out to me. But I, in the, in the interest of being a placeholder, I'm going to be, I'm going to be a supporter of this, and yes.
So John, if I could just, again, what I heard at LSC, some jurisdictions that already have a substantial medical marijuana presence are finding that it is expensive to have in town. And so they are looking forward to an opportunity to tax it.
Yeah.
To cover their costs involved in having the presence. I have, I heard from a number of cities that they looked at the fact that cigarettes are taxed at 24%, and that they're actually going forward with 20% on recreational and 10 on medicinal.
And the other conversation about rates is, and again, that's where we don't really know what the hydraulics are.
Right.
Undermining the whole point.
Share what I heard.
That's why you drive people back to the black market because the tax rates are so high.
Right, and that is the argument for the proponents, is they don't want to have such a high tax rate, they're, they're putting a state tax in, but they want to make sure that the legal over-the-counter state tax version is not cheaper than the black market version, that the black market version goes out of business, that's the theory. So that's the theory behind the preemption.
It would, it would actually be the other way around. The black market would still be cheaper, but it would come with a higher level of risk.
Right.
You want to keep your taxes below your profit margins so that people are up and up and up a little bit.
Right. So these are some of the discussions that I listened to on at the LSC convention.
And once we set the 10% and the 5%, that's something, once it passes, we can't change?
No, no, you can change that.
Okay.
Once, yeah, that's why I say, I wouldn't want to adopt this with a rate of zero.
Perfect.
But having these rates, as long as there's rates, we can adjust those before you ever start collecting the tax.
Council, shall I read by title?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, an ordinance establishing a tax on the sale of marijuana and marijuana-infused products in the city of Monmouth. And that will come back around next time. And last but not least, on our business agenda tonight, we are looking at the second reading of the ordinance which will allow chickens. And this would be ordinance 1348. And I think we have kind of discussed chickens to death, but if there are any questions for staff on this ordinance, this would be a good time. And hearing none, I will...
I move adoption of ordinance 1348, amending on the city codes, section 42 dot 215, creating new provisions relating to the maintaining of chickens in certain zones.
Second, do I need to read this thing by title, Lane, or is that okay?
I think she just did.
Okay.
With excellent flex, by the way.
Very, very well done. So moved and seconded. Are there any last minute comments or et cetera? And hearing none, fellows, a roll call, please.
Counselor Coons?
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Counselor Milligan?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Schaefer?
Aye.
I think it passed. With that, chickens are officially long-term legal.
I can retire.
For our fair city. And with that, I want to make sure I've got everything squared right here. All right. I've got some, some papers out there. With that, I would ask for council comments.
I have a letter that I distributed, some feedback that I'm helping provide the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department as a concerned citizen, safety of the Willamette Valley Scenic Bike Way. I'll preface this by saying that generally, I am interested in all things cycling, education routes, et cetera. It's personal interest to anyone that wants to talk about cycling, I'd be happy to bend in the air. This one in particular, I have an issue with the fact that the Willamette Scenic Valley Bike Way, Willamette Valley Scenic Bike Way, is currently taking people down South River Road and across, by the bridge, the South Independence Bridge. That's a, that's a very dangerous road, and I know that we have a much better infrastructure here on this side of the river. And so what you see in front of you is a proposed letter that outlines a route that takes the cyclists across the beautiful bridge that runs on Union Street into Wallace Marine Park, along our paved sidewalk or very wide breakdown lane on the Salem Highway, down the paved separated bike path that runs along 99, in close proximity to Monmouth, in case somebody wanted to stop and have lunch or...
Or a bike shop.
Visit a bike shop. And I know I left the bike shop out of the letter as a highlight, I'll make sure I put that in there. I love our bike shop. Through the town of Independence, where once again, they could enjoy any of the parks along the way, stop and grab something to eat, and then down past Buena Vista, the rogue hog barns, they want to stop up there, and across the ferry, when it's operational or continuing on to Albany in the times that it is not. Much safer, and it brings much-needed bicycling traffic from the east side of the river back to the west side of the river. I would welcome any counselors who wanted to co-opt of this letter to speak with me afterwards, or just raise your hand now, if you're the impatient type.
I think that rural tourism studio is another good opportunity.
In December.
Yeah.
I won't be able to attend that, nor would I be able to attend the...
I, I'm signed up for the full meal deal with the tourism studio, and I plan to advocate. Just a quick dose of history here, Governor Kligoski created the Willamette Valley Scenic Cycleway. It was originally intended, and in fact, ran from Chanpui to Eugene, the inaugural ride, spent the night in Monmouth. It came through Polk County, and the last three, prior three Polk County commissioners declined to take the signage for the path. The, the State Parks eventually created the alternate route that we see now on the other side of the river, and kept the Polk County leg listed, and this ran from Wheatland Ferry down, and as you, as your route does, Marshall into Albany. And the State Parks kept it on as an unsigned alternate route for a long time, is now not even that. I heard at the inaugural meeting of the tourism studio, that a commissioner present said that, oh no, the, the commission really supports cycle tourism. So I think this opportunity, where State Parks is having hearings about the current alignment, from what you said...
They've actually gone out there and written it, and surprised, surprised they didn't care for it much.
Right. And so, and so this is an opportunity, I think, to see if, in fact, we might be able to leverage the tourism studio, which State Parks is heavily, has a heavy presence there, and see if we can't bring the darn thing back on this side of the river where it was in the first place. And I think this, this letter, you know, as I said to you at the start of the meeting, I puzzled over the northern part of Polk County for a long time, how to get folks in a reasonably straight line over the West Salem Hills, and it's tough. And this was genius, just picking it up in downtown Salem and bringing it this way. And it's the South River Road leg to stay away from it, it's just great. This is really thoughtful on your part, you know, I, I see a lot, a lot of brain power going into this thing.
A lot of pedal power, mostly it's just the route I ride.
Well, there you go. But this is good stuff, and it's, you know, it's the, it's the beginning. So I want to thank you for taking this on and bringing it to our attention. And yeah, I'll sign on, and in fact, I'd like to try to go to that hearing and speak on behalf of this idea.
And I've also, as a citizen, reached out to Sean Irvine and Dave Klein over in our sister city, and they're both interested as well.
Very good.
Now procedurally, you know, how do we move the needle on this one? I mean, because we currently have the, the sort of west side, or the east side route is in place, we're trying to arrest that, or just from the east side, or are we just trying to...
Oregon Parks and Rec, they've identified South River Road as well as the point south of Albany, where it crosses Highway 34, as areas of concern. Once again, they actually got on their bikes, went out the road, this route has existed, and turns out they weren't real fond of it. It's just, it's narrow, there's no shoulders, a lot of blind curbs, it's, it's nowhere. So they, it's already, it was already on their radar, I made a comment on their Facebook page, just saying, hey, anyone who wants to go up to the west side, it's a lot more pleasant over here. And they picked up on that comment, saying we have a standard meeting with public hearing and, and we'd welcome comments. Since then, Sean Irvine's been in touch with them, they say they would really appreciate the letter, something in writing, goes a little bit further than just the public comments piece. So I intend to contact Sean and Dave tomorrow, let them know what the interest is from folks that I've talked to, from all around Monmouth, not just on the side of the table, and see if we can't put something together with the two cities to show our support, municipal support for making this happen.
And so, John, I think there's sort of a parallel thing going on here, there's the tourism studio, which has an emphasis on cycle tourism, and this is an opportunity to perhaps open the door and see if we can get State Parks, which again, has a heavy presence at the tourism studio, to engage the tourism studio and look at the possibility of bringing the thing over here.
Cycle Oregon will be staying at Western again next year, so the timing would be really great if we could get this in place before then, to get new maps with Cycle Oregon in town.
Very good, I didn't know that.
So it's a, so it's really perfect timing.
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's public consumption, too late now, it's in the minutes.
It's on TV.
The word on the street, word on the street.
The word on the street is, I, I have been asking every time I have an opportunity to talk to folks from Cycle Oregon, I've been inviting them back, so maybe, you know, there's the chance they heard me, I don't know whether they will or not. Okay. Thanks, this is good stuff. Anybody else with any council comments? With that, I would request a motion to adjourn to work session.
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
opposed? And we'll meet and sacrifice this.